Good morning, Buenos dias and welcome to the Board of Education's second CIP work session. Before we begin, I will ask board members to introduce themselves. Mrs. Sivarna.
Premio Sivarna, student member of the board.
Good morning, everyone. Lynn Harris, I use she/her pronouns. I'm an at-large member of the board.
Good morning, everyone. Julie Yang, District 3.
Good morning, everyone. Brenda Wolf, District 5.
And I'm Carla Silvestre, President of the Board. At the Board's first CIP work session on Thursday, October 24th, the Superintendent provided to the Board his recommended fiscal year 2026 capital budget and amendments to the FY '25 through '30 capital improvements program. The Board then held hearings on Monday, November 4th and Wednesday, November 6th to receive public input on those recommendations. Following today's work session, the Board is scheduled to take final action to approve the fiscal year 2026 capital budget and amendments to the FY '25 through '30 CIP on Thursday, November 21st at 10:00 a.m. Dr. Taylor, I pass it to you for any opening comments.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, members of the Board. Today is our second work session for the recommended fiscal year 2026 capital budget and amendments for fiscal years '25 through '30 for the capital improvements program. During the October 24th session, I emphasized my focus, commitment, and goals to keeping major projects whole, and that is what our plan proposal includes. Since our last work session, we've held two public hearings and heard from many of our community members, students, staff, and families about their advocacy for the schools and the school clusters related to the capital improvements program. We want to take a moment to thank everyone who took the time to come out and to share their thoughts and to provide public testimony in support of our school district and their specific school and community needs. Today, we share some follow-up to what we heard and what has occurred based on those discussions. We also want to address next steps for the Charles W. Woodward High School project, as well as an update on our upcoming boundary studies. Fiscal year '26 is the second year of the biennial CIP review process in accordance with Montgomery County Charter. Only projects that need expenditure or appropriation changes are considered for amendments to the CIP at this time. We look forward to our work with you during the coming weeks to prepare our final request for the Board of Education to be reviewed by County Council and the County Executive. I'll pass this over to Ms. Dana Edwards, our Chief of District Operations, and Essie McGuire, our Chief of Staff, Mr. Adnan Mamoun, our Deputy Chief of Facilities Management, and Mr. D.J. Connolly from our capital improvements team, and Robin O'Hara from our facilities team to continue with this morning's presentation.
Good morning, members of the Board and Dr. Taylor. We're going to start with reminding everybody, and Dr. Taylor has already addressed this. The theme of our CIP for this off-year is keeping our projects whole. In that regard, our request is same as what was presented last year, 1.853 billion. We do need $21.6 million that was discussed to bridge the gap in local funding for Woodward. And then we're recommending some off-year amendments to focus on keeping the major projects whole, and we'll go into the details a little bit, as well as reallocating some funds to support key priorities and minimize impact on the local resources. And there are no additional CIP changes in the overall amount. And then we will talk a little bit about the foundational work that we're planning on doing for us to get ready for the FY '27 CIP presentation next year. So the overall amounts include an additional ask for Crown High School. We'll go over what the $20 million ask is for, as well as $5 million for Northwood, and then $28 million for Woodward reopening, and then one additional HVAC project, $4.5 million for the second phase of Lordhamon Middle School, High School HVAC upgrade. And then we're recommending deduction of $4 million from BNP, and then $36.5 million from Early Childhood Centers, and then four elementary school projects, $3 million each, which totals to $12 million, and $5 million reduction in sustainability initiative to be able to pay for the additional ask for the major projects to keep them whole. And then we do have that $39.3 million state fund gap for Woodward High School, and we're offering and recommending a $17.7 million of that gap from leftover project funds from completed projects that we no longer need. And that essentially totals that $21.6 million request to bridge the gap for local funding. So the major project increases we talked about, we need $20 million to complete the auditorium for Woodward High School, and $20 million for the interior of the auditorium, classrooms, and labs, and stadium turf at Crown High School, and $5 million for the stadium at Northwood High School, and we've already mentioned the $4.5 million in additional HVAC funding to complete the second phase of Lordhamon Middle School project. And then just a quick update and reminding everybody of the projects that are in the pipelines currently and in the future. We have Poolsville High School Phase 2 in construction right now. It is scheduled to be completed in August of 2025. Silver Spring International Middle School addition is also underway, which will be completed in August of '25, as well as the addition at Greencastle Elementary School. Slated for completion in August of 2026 is the Burtonsville Elementary School replacement and Joan Lellicke Elementary School replacement project. And then 2027 is the completion of Crown High School, Northwood High School, and Woodward High School reopening, as well as the addition at Highland View Elementary School, the plans for which were approved by the Board earlier this year. We do also have construction funding in FY '29 for Damascus, Eastern, Cold Spring, and Damascus Elementary School, Twinbrook Elementary School, and Wedstone Elementary School. Those are the major capital projects that have construction funding in FY 2029. And just a reminder, we're here on the second work session of the Board today, and then we are going to be looking for the Board's approval of the CIP on November 21st. So wanted to address some of the comments that we have heard through the public engagement sessions we've had earlier this week. So for the Woodward High School project, some of the next steps that we've heard and wanted to talk about the next steps. There were some concerns shared with us about the consistent delays of project milestone. So we are currently, you know, working with the team to reestablish the milestones going forward, and we will be communicating that with the community and the school in making sure that everybody understands where we're at with the project. There was concerns that was expressed about the limited community engagement from the contractor, and we will ensure that the contractor attends all the future community and SCIT meetings and provides regular updates to everybody, so everybody's aware of what's happening with the project moving forward. As far as the project management, we will be enhancing communications and structures and processes internally. And then we will be providing, we will be developing and providing quarterly communication to the school as well as the community, so that everybody's aware of what's happening with the project. It will also allow us to, you know, hear feedback from the stakeholders as well as we move forward with the project.
So as we discussed the last work session, the CIP is funded from four revenue sources: bonds, state aid, taxes, and current revenue. Ms. Yang, you had asked for a pie chart, so the next slide addresses that. So we have the different revenue sources. We also have their amounts and their percentages. This is from the approved CIP. The amounts are shown in hundreds of thousands of dollars, so for example, we receive roughly $170.1 million in impact taxes. So that is how you read this pie chart. And keep in mind that the state aid amount will change once we have a final approved amount for the Charles W. Woodward High School project. And at this time, I'll hand it over to Ms. Edwards.
Good morning and thank you. Earlier in the presentation, you saw three projects: our Damascus project, Damascus High School, Woodward, and Crown. What we've heard, I would say probably since August up until now, from community input during our hearings, was just some feedback surrounding the boundary study. And so we wanted to be able to provide a holistic update in terms of just the direction we're moving. Since our last preliminary work session, we have had an informational meeting for community members and advocates that we invited in to be able to share the scope of the boundary project that we have coming up, and two, where we are in terms of the timeline with the RFP process. During that time, we also took questions for us to think about in terms of how we communicate, when we communicate, and the things that we do need to bear in mind. The RFP submissions were received through October 31st. And from last Friday through, I would say yesterday, we have made the RFP available to people who will be supporting us with the review and selection of the vendors that we have heard from. And so they have been able to come in, ask questions, take a look at that RFP. And then this afternoon, we will be working together to evaluate the submission, be able to look at that criteria, and receive feedback through a committee of stakeholders from our community, as well as internal MCPS staff. What we will do is we will have a recommendation prepared for the Board for Board Action for the November 21st CIP meeting to be able to bring that to you, to be able to help us select that vendor for this particular process. One of the key components that has come out and that we will be doing, we will enhance our website so that as we go along this process, people are able to access it, see what's happening in real time, and keep a live-running, frequently-asked questions document that has come up. We do know that from this process, one of the critical components that's important is how we really stage a process that has culturally competent community engagement along the way. We have formative checkpoints, and so at this point, we are really kind of gathering those key components to really help us. One key piece that's come out that I do want to highlight, if you take a look at the fourth bullet, that we did hear very loud from the folks that we've been working with, is what is the comparison between the 2019 boundary analysis and the current boundary study? And I think that there are two key words that kind of stand out. One was an analysis, and it was an analysis to tell us what the scope is or was at that point in time of the county. And this is an actual study where the scope is very focused on where are the schools and which schools actually go to the three identified high schools that I spoke of earlier: Damascus High School, Crown High School, and Woodward High School. So as we move forward, we will stay very transparent and communicative around this process. Just a few quick follow-ups from some of our CIP hearings that we heard from our communities that we wanted to be able to provide, just an update in terms of the direction that we'll be moving. We will be following up and scheduling meetings to visit many of the schools that we heard of. Ms. Harris, you asked for us to do that in concert with the children, which we will definitely do, taking many members of our maintenance teams with us to have a comprehensive look and a comprehensive plan, being able to provide our principals some communication and feedback as they move on. We also will take a strategic approach to continue to support our schools with facilities that fall outside of the CIP. So we do recognize that there are schools that are not up for CIP funds, but that does not negate our responsibility in really being thoughtful around some things that may be cosmetic needs, some things that might be structural needs that we can really work within the confines of what we do. We do want to enhance our communication, as Mr. Mamoun talked about, in terms of our engagement around construction and renovation projects, and really thinking about how we project manage projects as well. There are a few pieces during our CIP hearings where we heard some conversation around really thinking about the facility conditions index and really making those data-driven decisions. And so one thing that we are stepping back to really take a look at is what data are we missing within that process to really kind of really make us see a clear picture of the needs of the school? And are we continuing with the right data set? So we want to make sure that we are aligning the things that we need, but also seeing beyond what's on paper and really making sure that we have everything there. And then the final component, and Dr. Taylor has spoke about it on several times, our HVAC projects, our roofing projects, like really being a pillar. That was a consistent thread of what we heard in terms of there being concerns there and really thinking about and putting together over the next several months a six-year systematic plan to really think about those infrastructure components where we can really create those learning environments that would be the best for our students and staff. I apologize, I do have the last slide. So to return back, we want to keep our major projects whole, really looking at our CIP being the 1.8.53 billion, the same amount as the approved CIP, with the $21.6 million that is needed in local funding to address the revenue shortfalls. The amendments that we have put forward do reallocate funds to support those key projects and minimize impact on any local resources during the off-year. We do want to again point out, there are additionally no major CIP changes in the FY '26 requests. But moving forward for '27, we do know that we would plan and prepare for project scopes and priorities that would position us for a larger CIP request in '27. For questions.
Okay, thank you for that, and I will ask my colleagues to turn their lights on. You're first, sir.
Appreciate that, thank you. So we talk about there being no major CIP changes. So that's when we're talking about that we're meaning like positive changes in terms of adding to our CIP, because I also see, you know, we have removed Lewin and McGruder's plannings and construction dollars for the '27 request, or for '26 request.
So those changes were part of the approved CIP, so those are not new changes. So that, when folks have been speaking at the hearings about those being removed, that was actually done as part of the full-year process last year by the council during reconciliation. So that we haven't made any new changes to that, but those are projects that are good examples of the work we'll be doing to do that foundational work so that we can revisit them for next year's full-year request.
Okay, got it. That makes perfect sense. I appreciate that. So then kind of, I'll just leave that one question for now, what my colleagues asked.
Ms. Yang?
Yes, thank you so much. I really want to express my
Yes, thank you so much. I really want to express my appreciation to the staff and to Dr. Taylor. Of today's slide deck, I'm really very appreciative to the slide seven. Oh, no, 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 slide seven, yes, and the slide 11. We held two hearing sessions. These two slides demonstrate that you listened and you heard, and you actually have made plans to address what you heard during those hearing sessions. So I'm very pleased to see this, and I think this is excellent work. And I want to send a message to for those who came, even though this is an off year, but we haven't forgotten their needs, right? We will follow up with their building maintenance needs, and we'll keep the conversation going for next year when we have a major capital budget year. So great work. Truly appreciate it.
Ms. Harris?
Just a couple of questions for me. First of all, remind me. So I believe our boundary study RFP also includes a programmatic analysis component to help us do what I believe, I keep saying we need a strategic plan for programs instead of playing whack-a-mole. So am I correct that it does include a look at where our programs are? And because programs will be a part of the the new schools?
Yes, we have, I mean, we have to look at our programs. We cannot say you go here, but people don't know their experience that they will have within the schools.
Okay. I mean, I very much hope that this, we're paying a lot of money, hiring a vendor to come in and do this work, but that lays the foundation for us to actually see and acknowledge where all of our programs are, you know, local, regional, county-wide. And we will see very clearly where the inequities are. And that will be lay the groundwork for a true strategic plan for where we, how we geographically locate these programs to make them truly geographically accessible. Because I think that will also allow us both to expand these opportunities, truly make them more accessible, but also drive fewer miles on the roads if we have a truly strategic plan. And one thing I wanted to elevate or ask about that we heard, I think at our second, maybe it was the first CIP hearing, concerns about Woodward. And some of the commenters mentioned that the tennis court work had been improperly done, so was not going to be a resource for, at least not in the near term, Northwood while they are there. Could we get a little more information about that and what is being done about that?
So yeah, I can provide a quick update, and we can follow up with a more detailed. So the asphalt surfacing of those tennis courts that was incorrectly done will be corrected this month. Then it would be available for, like, you know, used as just a PE surface. However, the tennis surfacing, it's weather dependent. So we might have to wait for that surfacing to happen after the temperature is consistently above a certain, for a certain number of days, for like 10 to 15 days straight, which would probably happen in the in the springtime. But the correction of the surfacing itself, just the asphalt part, has, is on schedule to be completed this month. So it will be available for the students to use as a PE space. Unfortunately, it will not be available as a tennis court up until we have that window of opportunity, because that is very specialized trade to come back and resurface those tennis courts and the striping. That would probably happen in the in the springtime.
Yeah, well, I mean, climate change is real, so it could happen sooner than we think. So honestly, so a question. So we aren't on the hook to pay any more money because of the error. Okay. And I appreciate that that error, we call that error, was identified. Disappointing. But okay, thank you. And one, just one of the things I did want to highlight as well. We heard great testimony from both at yesterday's board meeting and in the two CIP hearings from from sort of our partners around us who bring expertise to the table and really want to help us be a better school system. And some, a lot of that touches on the CIP. It might not be wholly issues within the CIP. But we have, as a system, often been reluctant to acknowledge and engage the expertise around us. But I think when we do, it makes us better. So looking at, for instance, the MCC PTA committees on on technology and privacy, making sure that we are really, we really are doubling, we are really pushing into that partnership because they can help us be better. Same with the testimony around the safety and security work. Some of that is operating, but but some of that infrastructure does come out of the CIP. But leaning into that partnership as these are people who just really, they're not getting paid. They're just, they just care about making us a better school system. And so the better we are at just really appreciating that expertise that's around us, I think, will help us. And I cannot, I cannot, I do want to also shout out our three students that came yesterday and presented their ripple prototype, which again is exactly the kind of work that can help us be a better, more efficient school system. And efficiency equals dollars. When we, when we work smarter, when we spend less time, time is money. And I really do, and I really, I'm just going to encourage us to look very, very closely at that product, what they've developed, because those three are pretty soon going to be at MIT or Georgia Tech or Illinois. And in four years, we will not be able to afford them. And so taking advantage of the expertise they've already produced based on their lived experience of our school system, I really, really, really encourage us to to do that, because they've done work that we need to do and haven't been able to get to yet. So that's all from me. But I do, I do appreciate all of this work and appreciate the kind of the more sort of generous, open way we are doing this and really trying to be more more of a partner with our community.
Ms. Wolf, do you have any questions before I ask mine?
Okay, I'll start, and then if she has questions, she can jump in. If we could go to number four, slide four, just because that's the, that's what we're here to talk about, the amendments. So just for, to be clear, some of these decisions were not, we were not able to afford these projects in in whole when we first, when we approved the CIP last time. And that's why this is a phase two for both Woodward, Northwood, and Crown. Is that correct? And can you help me understand and for our viewing audience about the decision to, I think lots of schools would say, hey, we have HVAC problems too. Why, why Loiderman? Why now?
So Loiderman actually had a half of their rooftop units done this year. So this would get them the phase two of their HVAC project. That's why they were identified.
Consistent with the other projects we're finishing?
Correct. And to clarify, Woodward would be phase three.
Phase three.
Crown would be phase two.
Okay. So around the analysis, the boundary study, I think that that always causes a lot of anxiety in the community. And so I would like to, to better understand kind of the lessons learned from our study. And I think there were some lessons learned in terms of community engagement in that process. And also lessons learned from the Seneca Valley Boundary Study. So I think I got the words wrong. So lessons learned from our analysis, which was, I think, lessons learned in community engagement there. And then lessons learned from our boundary study for Seneca Valley. So that we can have those fresh and top of mind as we begin this big boundary study. If I recall, what we learned from the analysis was that the changes, the significant changes can be made when we're looking at large parts of the county. It's hard to make changes when you're just looking at small areas of the county. But here we have an opportunity to make changes to better align with our policy since we do, we are looking at the majority of the county for this this opportunity. And the other thing that we learned from the analysis is that people like to be close to their school. Proximity was a resounding factor from the community engagement process at the time. Not perfect, if I recall, but that was what I recall being some of the feedback from that community engagement process. I think it's really important that in your website, you emphasize the four factors in our policy. There's a lot of rumors already about what this means and where their kids are going to go to school and busing across the county. We follow a policy which has four factors that are weighed equally. Proximity, utilization, stability, and socioeconomic diversity. It's not perfect. You know, we, we have to, I said equally, but not really. Sometimes you have to weigh one more than the other to make it work. But I think it's important for the community to understand that that as a base for our work going forward. And then finally, about the vendors, you said vendors plural for the boundary study. How many vendors do you have?
Vendor, excuse me, vendor, one.
Okay, and that feels a little problematic, and you talk about why it's not problematic to only have one vendor responding to an RFP.
So for, we have a very large scope for what we're looking at for our boundary study. We did extend it, if the board remembers, we were supposed to end at a certain time, and we extended it because we did not have anyone apply. It's important that who applies is someone who has gone through the RFP. They can meet the demands that are there, and they are a company that has either had some level of experience and/or they are very knowledgeable and the ability to be able to do our scope. So we feel with the vendor that we have and the process that we'll use, at this point, we should go through the process that we have to be able to make the selection to bring to the board. The other component is we do have a timeline that we do have in front of us in terms of being able to build the school and have the boundary set in order to be able to open on time for children.
But that's allowed in our procurement practices to just have one vendor, as long as they meet criteria?
Yes, and we work with our procurement department to be able to review. When we did not have anyone, what were the proper procedures to take to be able to extend? As well as being able to engage our stakeholders to be able to come in and and review the RFP with us, utilizing the rubric that we have.
And then you talked about planning for next year in your remarks. And I think that as we revamp the KFI process, what's it called now?
Facility Condition Index.
Facility Condition.
Facility Condition Index.
It takes a while for my neurons to reconnect. But, you know, I would like for, as we plan ahead, to have as transparent process as possible. You know, we, there's always decisions that have to be made when you have limiting resources. I would love to be able to put all the projects that need to meet the high facility FCI. But you can't because there's limited resources. So you do have to make decisions. And people will be upset about that because one school will not make it, and we will decide which schools will make it on the CIP. But I'm hoping that this new process, you know, can be as clear and transparent to the public to see which schools are rising to the top and what schools we will need to choose from with the money that we have available. So looking forward to seeing that evolve in the coming year. Ms. McGuire, were you going to say something? I saw you go for your light.
No, thank you. I was going to chime in when you were discussing the boundary analysis, but I think you captured, I think you captured the key points there, unless there's anything that folks have questions about.
Okay. And finally, I just wanted to respond to something that we heard in the testimony over the last couple sessions, and that was about lead in the water. It's always very troubling to hear that, so I just wanted to address it publicly so that our community understands that we are constantly testing our water fountains in the schools. And while we went through a process of checking them a couple of years ago, that's ongoing. And there is going to be a fountain at a school that doesn't match, doesn't meet the the levels. And we will shut that down, and we will put that in the work order and address it. Nobody is drinking, well, okay, let's not say that. But that's, it's an ongoing process, and we are aware of it, and we address it. And it's unfortunate that it happens, but I think it's a normal course. So when you have a school system this big with different types of buildings and aging infrastructure. So I just wanted to address that. We acknowledge that that's happened, but that's, we have a process for addressing it, and we shut down those water fountains until they are fixed. And then again, around the the work order issue, I know you're looking into it. I can't emphasize how important, how frustrating it is to sit here as a board member and time and time again to hear testimony about the same things, right? Not being addressed in a timely manner. And I know we have staffing issues that we would love to send more people to address, but we just don't have the staff. But we need a better system for transparency. And, yeah, so that's, a lot of these quality of life issues at the school level can be addressed in a more efficient manner. Thank you. Mrs. Varno?
Yes, thank you. So when when we were talking about, you know, the the facility services request, one thing that me and Ms. Yang were talking about was like while connected to like MCPS Wi-Fi, staff can, like, any staff can look at like the list of the MCPS work order system. Is that, and then we were also talking in previous work sessions about maybe the possibility of bringing some sort of front-facing work order system to the public. Is that, is this something that maybe we're planning on introducing to the public at any time or anything along those lines?
That's one of the things that we're investigating. I think Ms. Sebastian brought up some key components. It does come up every year in terms of work orders. Getting past the staff is really the process and the strategic approach. And so that is one of the key areas of work that we do have to work on in facilities in terms of taking a broader look at our work orders, not just the sheer number, but what are they for? Where are they and how we're addressing them? And then changing up how we actually do business about them. At the second works, public hearing, I did mention looking at bringing it where it is more front-facing. School staff can see, or actually principals and building service managers can see them. The part that we don't necessarily have at this point is the feed to the websites to make them more transparent in terms of what's actually happening. And so we do have to look at how we open that up a little bit more. So one, can you see it and do you know what's happening? And then two, how we're addressing the number of work orders and the large, where are the areas of largest concern so that we can strategically approach those?
So real quickly, you mentioned like the feed to the website. So you're saying, because, because I mean, like, I have it like up on my computer right now where I can like search the work order system, and I'm not a building service manager or an administrator at the school. So like, would any MCPS staff be able to do it while they're on MCPS Wi-Fi? Or only building service managers and administrators?
That I don't know. So if we could follow up with you about that, that would be helpful. And thank you for sharing that with us, because we unfortunately were not aware of that, so.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And I know, I mean, I've had students who have been able to, through their MCPS emails on MCPS Wi-Fi, like, look at some of these work order systems. So it's, I don't think it's just a, like, me as a, having a MCPSMD.org email, but maybe it's the .net emails too, or when they sign into the Wi-Fi. But did just want to follow up on that, because that's something that I was in, like, looking through the website and was able to find, so.
Can I add something, follow up? So I appreciate the intention to have front-facing information. When I think about it, in our buildings, the user, the supermajority users are our students, right? So the maintenance, all capital improvement plans is serving our students. And a lot of times, there's a lapse between student experiencing an issue and staff members being aware, right? And then the administration or building service being aware of the issue. So I think we, we need to think about a way, it can be something simple. The paper towel's out, the sink is not working, this toilet is keep running water. How often does our staff go? How often does our staff go into a student-use bathroom, right? It's our students who are the first one to notice this issue. So if there is a way we cut down on the lapse between an issue and to be making people aware of, if there's a way we do that, that will really improve the learning experience, right? The quality of life issue in our school building. So I really would like us to, to look at that. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, one thing I remembered when Ms. Silvestri pulled up slide four. So I'm looking at the Crown High School project, and it's talking about stadium turf. So I don't know if that's just using, being used as a generic term, because I know a year ago, we got a promise from the system that before we, we made major expenditures on athletic field services, we would do our due diligence to, which we have not done in quite some time, to really analyze all the factors around the decision between a natural field and an artificial field. The sustainability impacts, the health and safety impacts, the fiscal impacts, the maintenance impacts, and we haven't done that. So I'm, I just want to ask, is this implying that a decision about the actual surface has been made or just the funds are included in this $20 million to install whatever type of surface we decide is in the best interest of the system?
I know that when the project was scoped, and that was several years ago, it was scoped with synthetic turf, and that's the price that's been included is, and that is actually the scoping standards that are for new projects unless otherwise directed by the board.
And I would just add to that, that in terms of analysis, Ms. Harris, the Office of Legislative Oversight actually did put out a report and worked closely with all of the agencies, including MCPS. So I think the, I think we are leaning into the collective analysis there in terms of that information. Again, that report presented a lot of pros and cons and not, not an answer one way or the other, but I think that is a useful body of analysis that we can lean into as well.
Okay. And, you know, it breaks my heart a little bit that we're taking $5 million out of our sustainability work, but I really do, I am very hopeful that through the Inflation Reduction Act, that some of that's going to come back to us. So anyway, yep, that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Savanna?
Yes, so just continuing off of, off of that, speaking from student experience, any student athlete will tell you like a well-maintained grass field is always better than, than, than a turf field. And so just like kind of echoing off that sentiment, we heard from, you know, McGruder High School about, you know, the state of their field, and, you know, their remedy, their solution was to have a turf field, but it's not like they, and we heard in the testimony, it's not like they wanted a turf field, but it was the only way that could be maintained more easily. So when we think about, you know, what are some of these as, like how many of them are stemming from like the backlog of maintenance order, maintenance requests, or thinking about like the maintenance that maybe wasn't being performed correctly to lead to a field in the condition that, you know, McGruder is, is talking about, and maybe some little bit more exploration in that side of things. And then continuing on with, with the work order system, I checked on my phone real quickly. I turned off my Wi-Fi, and I was still able to access it. So I'm not sure how public-facing it is in terms of being able to see these requests, but I know, like this is something that, that still exists. Past that, I'm going to move on to the boundary study for a second, but when, when we're talking about the boundary study, one thing that comes to my mind is, you know, how, how much we've changed, right, over the past like five years, 10 years, in terms of like our composition as a school system, and then, you know, current and global events that have impacted our demographics again within the school system. So my question is, and then also, you know, thinking about some of our construction projects and the delays or adjustments that have to have, that have been made, right, in order to accommodate this. So my question is, right, when we put this boundary study up based on the current scope of things, say, for example, down the line, we end up running into construction delays on, on one of our schools or two of our schools, and then it ends up that we're pushed another two, three years out, and the boundary study is no longer the best use, like fit, is that like something that is like scoped into the project or like, like can you just explain to me how we're making sure that we're future-proofing, not just for the, you know, the normal movement from students from one grade to another, but for a more general if, or sudden scenario sort of setup?
So it's, it's always possible to phase the implementation plan as it is usually in a boundary study, especially at a high school. We would be grandfathering generally. It's up to the board who gets grandfathered, but rising seniors in the Seneca Valley study, it was rising juniors and seniors. So in the case of a delay, say hypothetically Damascus, if it doesn't have the capacity to receive, and that's part of the boundary study, they could say the implementation could be phased out further. That would be one approach. There could be other approaches as well. But it is common to not have everyone go to the new school all at once. You don't open a, a brand-new school fully nine through 12 at a high school, for example.
Got it. So then my ask is that we're, again, being extremely communicative with, with, with our constituents about, you know, how, if like certain issues like that plan to arise, how we're planning on phasing that implementation once the source setup is there. And obviously, that's a, that's a pretty faraway question, but just want to be starting to think about it now. So we're, we're sure that, you know, people know what school they're going to, they know the plan, when the, when the switchover is happening, if there are any changes to that plan, to be very, very upfront and clear about that. So just people aren't, you know, wait, I thought I was going to this school, and then on the first day of school, it's, I think I'm at the wrong school. So just, just being clear about that. Past that, I would also just, just encourage you all, as part of my small advisory council, which again, thank you guys for coming out. On the 19th, 6:00, 8:00 p.m., Moon High School, I plug every meeting. But as part of that, I also have a redistricting research team who's been doing a lot of work, who's been polling students across, you know, a lot of the most heavily impacted areas in the DCC. When we talk about WJ with their overcrowding, up, down by BCC, like around up in Damascus as well. So I really, again, encourage you guys to reach out, and I can share that information at a later date if necessary.
Just to follow up to that, because we've been asked, who gets grandfathered into a, a new boundaries, a new school? Is that a decision of the board?
It, it is part of the board's action on the boundary study. Typically, the practice has been for the, the rising fifth graders, eighth graders, and in high school, 11 and 12 together. That has typically been the practice, but in every boundary study, it is a final aspect of the board's action.
Okay. And my final question is, we heard feedback from the community about the use of TBD to be determined in the CIP. They want a date. Why do we do that, and how, how can we be more forthcoming with a final date in the next CIP?
So I think in the next full CIP, certainly it is our intent to do, as we've been saying, the planning work that will allow us to schedule in those, those projects in a more certain way. I would say that a, part of the reason there are so many TBDs right now is a result of the funding reconciliation that the council enacted in, in the approved CIP last year. And so the intent there was to maintain the planning funds so that the progress on the work could continue, understanding that the funding wasn't there to confirm a hard, a firm date, but that the, the system will have the opportunity to continue that planning work, and we do intend to do that planning work, first of all, and then second, that will position us in next year's CIP to put forward a more firm date and work towards securing the funding.
And so I'll follow up by saying that that is an important step in the process and a prerequisite, actually, before we can even get to a date, making sure that we've done the planning due diligence. It's almost like this is the preliminary step before a timeline can even be established and committed to. So it is important that that work continue, and it's important that that stay in the scope. I get the frustration, it's like you've been waiting forever for a project to, to, to make it onto the list, and you finally see light at the end of the tunnel, and you see the, the school's name there. But as part of the county's process, as part of the CIP process, we have to complete that preliminary planning and scoping and test fits, and a lot of that work, it needs to happen ahead of even getting the project scoped and budgeted for. And then once it's budgeted for, then having that, those dollars committed in the next CIP is the next step after that. So we're 365 days away from seeing that on our side of it before we recommend a specific scope and, and timeline on those projects, and that's actually the soonest that we could recommend a set timeline would be a year from now.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I just, building on both something Ms. Silvestri said and Mr. Savanna, looking at the scope of the boundary study, I just want to make sure that we are being very mindful that in 2018-19, the board updated policy FAA, and the language of that says that options should especially strive to create a diverse student body. There are four factors, but that's the language of the policy, and we know from the boundary analysis in 2019 that that language raised, ripped a scab off of what this county, what simmers under the seemingly progressive nature of this county, because we heard a lot of loaded-coded language in those meetings with WXY, targeting the students, directly attacking the students who were speaking at their deep interests in having a truly diverse system of schools, not being a diverse school system, but being a system of diverse schools, and the research being clear that all students benefit from being in a truly diverse school. So as we move forward, I mean, that is, that is the experience that we have had in the county, and we're already hearing it. Ms. Silvestri already mentioned, people are out there already using that loaded-coded language around busing and things like that. So I really, really encourage us to be courageous in this work and follow, you know, not be afraid to follow our policy because we created that policy for a reason. And it is troubling, it remains troubling to me that we have many schools in our county. We have, the demographics of our county are well-known and well-demonstrated, but we have so many schools that are very lopsided when we look at how they are representative of, you know, the population that's served there. And nobody is ever talking about, we're going to bus students all across the place, but we have to be really mindful of the fact that we are a de facto segregated county because of decades of housing policy, and we, we want to be very, very mindful and thoughtful about this work and be ready for the loud voices that will undoubtedly come forward when we start to have these conversations.
Yep. And again, there are four factors, and we want to make sure that everybody understands that, understands the policy, and it's not perfect. Sometimes we have to make decisions based on what makes sense at the time. And so I think, you know, being transparent and communicating often, answering people's questions so that we can manage, manage the, the information and, and control the rumor mill. Mr. Savanna?
Yes, so, so two-part question, then another one. So my first part, okay, I'm going to ask my, my other question first, but it's more of a suggestion, but I would really highly suggest utilizing the school assignment tool that we have already on the MCPS website, where you can search up a house and see what a school dish, what a school is zoned into as a way to, to better inform, you know, families, constituents, stakeholders within the community about, you know, at what point in the year does this, like would this specific house, right, go over to another school, right? So when we're thinking about, you know, students who are grandfathered in, when the implementation is, right? So they can just say, well, I live right here, I don't know where my boundary is, I don't know where my school is, when will, like, when do these apply to me, right? So if in this year, this is when you will be in this school, because I think as it currently stands, it's just very much a cut and dry because we're not, you know, doing any sort of implementation processes. You go to this school because you're in this boundary, but that might change in the future through the boundary study.
So for the Seneca Valley, Clarksburg, and Northwest, we actually had an interactive map. So I believe there were 14 or 15 options. So you could actually click, put your address in on our school assignment tool on our page, and for option four, you may be going to Clarksburg, option five, you may be going to Seneca. So we, we did that with the Seneca Valley Boundary Study. So I would expect us to do something very similar.
Got it. So that, so that was part of the figuring out the boundary process, I'm saying, and I do really appreciate that. As someone who was affected by that boundary study up in Clarksburg, I do remember using that tool, but, and my friends using that tool. But one thing that I would suggest is after the implementation of those, being able to go, use the whatever regular school assignment tool we have and have it listed out year by year, what schools?
I will just add that in the school planning tool or the school assignment tool that's online now, if there is grandfathering still in place, there is actually a note that will appear at that address when you put it in. So that happened with the last boundary study, for example, the Bethesda, Westbrook, and Somerset study, that you could see that these students would go here for this year, and the next year, they would go there.
Okay, perfect. One step ahead.
Oh, no, Mr. Savanna, I was just going to share that you do create an opportunity for us because it's not only once the boundaries are done, we have to think about that afterwards. If we think about high schools and middle schools on the first day, you don't want everyone showing up to the guidance office because they don't have schedules. This is the same thing. We want people to go to the right school. It creates an opportunity to do some really good culturally responsive engagement, not only with families and communities and how we communicate it, but also to use students to be able to help us reach students and families in a different way. So we do have to break it up from the before, which we are right now, the RFP leading up, how we're getting there, the during, being communicated, communicative throughout, and then the after, so that everyone knows where to go and when, and anything that we need to support moving forward. It is a whole school system initiative. It is just not facilities because every fiber of this district will be touched by it. So thank you for that, but it's a good opportunity for us.
Got it. And so now to my two-part question. When we're evaluating like the, the scope or doing a preliminary analysis with our planning dollars, do we have an average of how long that usually takes, or is that something that can usually be figured out project by project, how long that takes?
Yeah, so the feasibility study, it depends on the size and the complexity of the project, to be honest with you. Usually, typically for an elementary school, it could be anywhere between three to six months or less. For middle or high school, again, depending on how big the high school is, the population and all of that, it could take, you know, six months or, or longer. But typically, it's, it's the size and the complexity of what we're trying to do. But yeah, it would be less than a year for planning for, for all the projects.
Got it. So then I guess, well, maybe one of my suggestions or something that I would want to explore the possibility of is when we are putting things in our CIP with TBD dates that still have planning dollars associated with it, maybe including a date that would say when the planning dollars elapsed, and then construction could theoretically begin if the dollars are included, or is that not possible?
So it's.
You may not want to do that because that, that I think leads down a path that, that is maybe suggestive of a narrative that's not accurate, because it, it would suggest to, to folks that, that a certain timeline is a project timeline when in fact it's really just a planning timeline, and that may or may not lead to inclusion on the CIP. I mean, eventually, the goal here is that you go through the planning process with the aim of a project making it onto the CIP, but some will not, and actually, many projects do not. And we wouldn't want to give false hope to that.
Okay, I understand. So sometimes the product scope doesn't lead to completion. Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I think that concludes my questions for now.
Seeing no other lights on, I didn't hear from Ms. Wolf. Just double-checking. Okay. This concludes our CIP work session. Board members have asked several insightful questions. As no new proposals or amendments to the CIP were presented, the 10- As no new proposals or amendments to the CIP were presented, the tentative hearing and work sessions previously scheduled for next week will not be held. As a reminder, the board will take action on the superintendent's recommended FY 2026 capital budget and amendments to the FY 25 through 30 CIP on Thursday, November 21st at 10:00 AM. Thank you. We are adjourned.[1751.35][1751.35][music]